Good morning and welcome to this public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Wednesday, July 25, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, Michael, you did want to add this item concerning the janitorial service for a quick discussion this morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have one additional item that we want, that we're going to get some information on, and I would like to add that as Item 6 on the agenda. And with that change being made, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we're going to move into a public hearing on the setting of the millage rate. As most people know, we are going to, that we are required by law to have three public meetings and to allow the public to express any comments they wish to make during this time on the proposed millage rate that will be adopted on August the 1st. So at this time, if there is any citizen in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter, I'd ask you to please step to the podium, Pastor Ralph Easterwood, and if you could state your name and address for the record. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, and if I knew all y'all's titles, I would call y'all's name out, too, but good morning to y'all, too, all right. I am Ralph Easterwood, the pastor emeritus at the Glenhaven Baptist Church, which relocated down here in 2002. I was pastor on the staff there 43 years. I still am there with my office and my counseling ministry, my Bible class, and I'm also a Henry County Police Chaplain for the last six and a half years. And I'm also a property owner in Henry County. My family owned property back in the 50s, and we've been taxpayers for that long, and we then moved down here on a permanent basis in 1989, and then we relocated our church down here in 2002. I am retired. I have a limited income, but the church has taken, they've taken well care of me, and I'm in favor of the millage increase. I'm sure that this is not going to be popular with some people, maybe even in my church and other places, but I think I have a right to state what I feel about this. My home was devalued through the economy, brought down at least $40,000. I have about $500 less taxes now, and so I don't mind paying more taxes if it will lead toward employees and not just police and firemen being considered for raises. I pray that as the economy increases, as the budget increases, that one of the things that I feel that is very, very needful in all the employees is for them to be paid more. I want to say this, I have the utmost respect for all of you Commissioners, all you that's involved in budgets. And a lot of people criticize y'all when they couldn't do as good as what you do, and I realize that because I've been in leadership for many years, and I appreciate, I think you all have integrity, I think you're honest, and I think you're doing the best that you know how. And I'm not here to talk about past purchases and past monies that's been spent, I'm here talking about what's going to happen in the future if this millage increase comes to pass. I realize that the furlough days now have been done away with, they won't have to take them, is that right? And I think that is great, but the employees, the way I see it, have not had a raise, our cost of living, for five years now. And I was riding with an officer the other day that had five or six years of service, and one officer that just come to work there, this officer's just making 75 cents more an hour than what this officer was making. So it's a tremendous thing, not only with the police and the firemen, but with all the employees here, that their salaries have not increased. As a preacher, I'll always bring in a little scripture, but I promise you, I won't take up an offering today, all right? So we'll go that route. Unless you push me, I might, all right. Luke 10:7 says, "For the laborer is worthy of his hire." I use a little key word, I call it ear, E-A-R, and lend an ear, I want you to lend an ear to what I have to say today, and that word, if you break it down as an acrostic, that E stands for encouraging, that A stands for appreciating, that R stands for respect. And when you lend an ear and you have people working with you and for you, one of the greatest ways to keep them happy that's doing a good job is to give them an ear and encourage them, appreciate them, and respect them. The years that I led at Glenhaven as pastor, I handled all the budgets, I handled the administrative part of it. Budget went from about $12,000, I think when I retired, it's about $38,000 a week. I know that's, that's a chunk change compared to what y'all deal with, but in when I, as I was figuring out the budget and how it would be spent, I never allowed the facilities to override the faculty. I always realized that regardless of how large a building I had and how nice that I made things for people to come there, if I didn't take care of my team and my staff, it may look good, but internally, it wouldn't operate good because I had to depend upon my staff to be happy and to do their jobs well. And so I was always, and wanted to let them know, I was going to do all I could to take care of them. We come down here with a little over 200 people, we, since we've been down here, we've had over 1,800 to join our church. We have about, almost 1,400 active members now with about 642 families. But I have a well-operating staff that is happy in what they're doing, and we need a new building right now, we need a larger building right now. But I never wanted to sacrifice the salaries of my staff to push ahead, like a lot of preachers do, and build large buildings, and then getting such a financial bind, they have to take it out on their staff and let staff members go and not pay them well, and they got this big facility, then sometimes you go by and you'll see a big facility and there's nothing going on there because it's disintegrated, because they have not taken care, the pastor did not take care of his staff. And I look on everyone that is working for the county as part of the staff. They're the people, regardless if they're DOT, if they're firemen, if they're policemen, if they're, in any department of the county, they're the ones, they're the team that makes up this county for what it is. They're the ones that gets out and does their job well, they make it safer, they make it better, they make it a better place to go on our roads, they make it to our houses, our communities, our schools, all of that, they make it better. And so I'm just here today speaking for all, and I believe, I know that y'all care for them, I know that you care for them, and I know you want to do what's best for this county. And I'm just a person, just a old country preacher, just saying that I feel as a citizen and a taxpayer and a resident of Henry County, I want, as the budget increases and as the millage rate is put in, that I will gladly, gladly pay more taxes. And I just pray that the salaries of our employees will certainly be considered because they are the team that causes this county to be what it is. And let's lend an ear to them, let's encourage them, let's appreciate them, and let's respect them. And if we can do that, as the budget increases, I feel like we can go on to greater things in this county, and I believe that we can have even a better county. But once again, I want to thank all of you, that I feel you do a magnificent job, and we're Christians, and anytime we say anything, we should, if we disagree, we should be agreeable, I mean, with each other, we can disagree and still be agreeable. And I think everything that's said concerning the budget and anyone that is speaking of it, and the county as citizens, I think we ought to do it in a Christ-like manner and say it with, the Bible says, be angry and sin. No, we can get stirred up about things, but we don't have, we don't have to get ugly about it. And I think, I, once again, I want to thank you, you are successful people, or you wouldn't be in the position you are today on this county. And I, and I appreciate the sacrifice that each and every one of you make to help make our county what it is. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, I've got to ease on out today, but thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Easterwood. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak about the proposed setting of the millage? And Mike, what will the, go ahead and give me the figure on that, the millage, the proposed millage is 14...
The proposed millage will be 14.5 mils for county taxes.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir, if you could, if you could step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, I'm Dick Arpairean. I have a question. I don't challenge your budget or the need for a millage increase because, like everybody else in the county, I believe, my tax bill went down. My question is, once this rate is raised, practically speaking, it will stay at that plateau and increase from there. Therefore, there must be a pent-up demand for spending money, expenditures. From a personnel standpoint, can somebody comment on where the greatest pent-up demand for new hires is? Or let me rephrase the question, is it that you need more people within the realm of public safety?
That would be accurate. Our, our police department and our fire department are in desperate need of additional staff. The additional staff is not in this budget. This budget includes the removal of furlough days that have been imposed upon our employees for the last two years, and basically, we have tried to keep our costs at bare minimum, but hopefully, as the economy turns around and new businesses comes in and the digest grows, we will be able to fully staff those departments in a way that we feel is in the best interest of the county. But this budget does not include adding new positions, it is maintaining what we currently have with the elimination of the furlough days.
Right.
Does that, does that answer your question? But there, as the county continues to grow, there is going to continue to be a need to add to public safety. We have about, we're adding, still adding population to Henry County every year, so there will be a need in the future to add additional officers and firefighters. We just haven't addressed it.
What's the check and balance with that, excuse me for interrupting, Madam Chairman, what's the check and balance on that? Every organization, not just public safety, wants to add personnel. What's the check and balance on public safety? It seems to eat up an awful lot of your budget.
It does. One of the things, and I'll just use the fire department as an example, that the county has very diligently worked toward is on our fire trucks, is making sure that we have a minimum of three firefighters per truck when it responds to a call, because that's what you have to have. One person stays out, two people go in. In the absence of three people on a fire truck, you, when you go to a scene, you can't really fully address that call until additional personnel show up. The goal, according to our fire chief, is to actually have four firefighters per truck, so then you have two in and two out, and you can switch up as the need requires it based on the call. And so there are certain, there are certain standards that I know our police chief and fire chief look at as far as what is an acceptable level of service or staffing needs based on population, based on call volumes and things of that, and safety issues. And we look to them and their expertise in providing that information to us. Mr. Bowman?
One other thing, sir, is that the, and I noticed that Major Bolton's here, the checks and balances for our police department come under population. I think, Major Bolton, if you'd step to the microphone, I think you can help me with this, because for the last five or six years, we've been down somewhere in the neighborhood according to the population of how many police officers per hundred or per thousand, whichever way you put it, and you know those numbers.
Pardon me, sir, but, so this is done according to a, I'll use the word formula, I've got 100,000 people, I must...
You got this amount of people, and you should have this amount, you should have this amount of police protection.
It's a formula based on call volume as well that is used by police departments across the nation, and last check on that, which was about a month or so ago that we did, I believe we are in need of somewhere between at least 20 and 30 additional officers to have enough to be able to respond to the number of calls that we receive. And of course, as the years have gone on, our call volume has increased significantly, and due to budget restraints and budget cuts over the last several years, we've lost a number of officers. So we are, at this point, in need of at least another 20 to 30 officers, according to the last formula that we did, and that was about a month or so ago.
And we have been down, sir, 20-plus officers for at least the last five or six years because one of the, one of the town hall meetings that you and I attended, we were, we were talking to some folks on the north end of the county about response times and other things, and all of that's all tied together, and that's your check and balance. Okay, you need this many because you've got 90 calls or one district's got this much. So I think, hopefully, that explains it, but that is how we, how we look at it. And from the fire department, exactly what Chair, Madam Chair spoke of, is that if a fire truck goes out with two on it, they don't go in anything. They gotta wait for somebody else to come because you gotta have that personnel there in order to do it. So that's why we've got a five rating instead of a nine rating, I mean, we're doing well in that, but...
Well, a question, fire department, is there more than one in Henry County? I don't mean stations, but there is a fire department, unlike the police force where there are that many different cars, sheriff?
There's, there's one, and to my knowledge, the only other one is the city of McDonough, which Henry County handles probably 90% of their calls anyway, if not more. But the city of McDonough, I don't believe any of the other cities have their own fire department, so...
All right, fire department, I understand, and I think the public accepts there's one fire department, but police departments, we seem to have not just Henry County Police Department, there are others out there. I use the word police, officers of the law. Does the city of McDonough have a police department?
Yes, sir, but those, those are the cities, they have the opportunity to have them if they want to have them, that doesn't have anything to do as far as the county's concerned. We don't sup, you know, we don't, the only city that doesn't have it is Stockbridge, and then we have a, we have an agreement with Stockbridge, but we don't have any control over whether the cities want their own fire, I mean, police departments or not, is that correct, Commissioner Holder?
And I can say with certainty that if we had to respond to calls within the city of McDonough, and the city of Locust Grove, and the city of Hampton, that we would need an additional number of officers that we're already short of as well. But yes, those three cities do have their own departments, and they handle calls.
Well, don't we also provide crime, crime investigations, specific crime investigations for the city because they don't have crime scene techs like we do?
That's absolutely correct.
So we do supplement some of their services.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. We are often called to assist on larger cases, whether it's a homicide that occurs within the city, or they make use of our crime scene techs fairly often as well for processing their scenes, so yes, we do assist them as well.
So Henry County Police are carrying the burden?
No, not for the cities. Can I come in?
Yeah, please do.
Major Bowman, I don't believe, I believe this might have been prior to your coming, but several years ago, the county did a study on numbers of offices per thousand people, and that's the way it's calculated. Henry County is at the time, and don't hold me to these numbers because that's been several years ago, but in Henry County, we had like 1.2 offices per thousand. And the other end of the spectrum was the city of Locust Grove, obviously a smaller town, but theirs was almost three to four. They were actually above the mid-range in the requirements for police officers. They can do that because they're smaller, and they had like nine officers or something, but it was still, with us, with 200,000 people, you do the math, and that's, that's basically what it was. That's the way it's done. And as far as the cities, Major Bolton's right, we do backup with them, and the cities get rollbacks for those, rollbacks in their taxes for their providing police or fire or whatever service they provide. So they get the rollback for it to do it. I think the most cost-effective way would be to have a consolidated department, but that won't happen in our lifetimes, you can rest assured, because the cities are not going to do that. Back to your first question, or the first part of your first question, Mr. Arpairean, you mentioned about, once the millage got to this plateau, it would never go back. And I'll look to defer to Mike Bush, the finance director here, that is, that, that's not what happens. It can reduce, there have been reductions, and Mike, would you explain that one?
Every year that your digest increases, by state law, you have to go in and either reduce your, let's say that your millage was 11.75, and your millage went up, so you're gonna have to, you, based on formulas that none of us know, you have to go back and reduce that 11.75 to a number below that to equal the same taxes you brought in last year, or it would be a tax increase. Just like in the times we're in today, when your digest goes down, you actually can adjust your millage rate up to collect the same amount of taxes, and that, to basically be even where you were last year, and that's not considered a tax increase. I've been here since 2002. There have been two occasions where we've rolled the millage rate backwards, and there's been one where it has been rolled to a higher tax increase, this would be the second. Every other year, it's always either been, you know, it's been adjusted to wherever the rate was for the previous year, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to the setting of the millage? If so, yes, if you would, step to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Tommy Kennedy, I live at 328 Dillon Way in McDonough, Georgia, and I'm pleased to be able to be here and talk to you. I actually was one of the persons who sat on the citizens review panel for the budget, so I have an MBA from Georgia Tech, and I was actually a financial analyst for a number of years, I'm currently a minister, but I have the financial ability to look at the numbers and understand what they are. And really, after looking at it, I want to commend you guys for, for cutting a lot of fat out of the budget. I mean, it's, it's tremendous amount that has been cut, and after looking at all the numbers, I looked at it and said, there's no way that you can do this without having a millage adjustment. And but as a, as a taxpayer, I don't want more taxes, and I know that there are folks in the community who are extremely angry at government. A lot of them are angry at federal government, but you're here. And so what my perception is, a lot of them are angry at you because they can't get to Washington. And so the perception that you're being irresponsible or increasing taxes is, is out in the community, and it is fanning the flame by a small number of folks who are just mad. But I think the vast majority of citizens and people that I talk to, I'm a member of the Henry County Rotary Club, I'm active in the community, they want to have a nice community. And when I talk to people and say, well, you know, what's the deal about taxes? I say, well, if you pay the same amount this year as you did last year, are you okay with that? Like, sure. I said, well, that's what they're trying to do, it's a, it's a small adjustment to try to get the same amount of dollars to fund police and fire. What really disturbs me is when I looked at the projections of what if we didn't, and things particularly that disturbed me were, were things of reducing firemen and police and things of that nature. I mean, even if you cut out whole departments, then you're still not at what you need. And reducing fire and then having all the insurance rates go up in the county is irresponsible, in my view. I'd hate to get a notice from my mortgage company saying, congratulations, your mortgage payment with your escrow has now been decreased by $10 a month, and then get a notice from my insurance company saying, your insurance premium payment has just gone up by $20 a month. And that's really, in my opinion, cutting off your nose despite your face. You are in a difficult position, I understand some of y'all are running for reelection, there are candidates in the room, I understand that, but, but you're also elected by all of the people to make wise decisions for the community. And so this is a difficult decision, and I think that you need to look at it carefully. But if you're not increasing the dollars out of my pocket, then you're not increasing my taxes. If you cut fire and all these other things, then you're declining the community, and we have already been in decline long enough. And so from my perspective, and from other folks in the community that I have spoken to, I don't see how we can continue to cut unless we cut services. I kind of looked at my bills for my house, I'm underwater in my house, as many others are, and I realized that my water bill hasn't changed, even though my, my house has dropped, well, I won't say those numbers, it's dropped a lot, but my water bill's the same, my power bill is the same, my mortgage payment, other than a small adjustment on my escrow, is the same, you know, my cable bill is the same, but my police and fire and water and library and everything else, you know, I'm using the same, I'm actually using less, I'm not able to go to the library at, at times when they're closed, I mean, we've all had to roll back, but, but the services you provide, you know, still cost something, and I know people who are on the police force who were frustrated because they've not getting the wages that they ought to, and, and that's an issue that'll have to be addressed in a future budget. So, so I am actually very much in favor of having a reasonable, modest adjustment that collects the same amount of taxes last year, and I'm not in favor of tax increases. But in my view, this is not a tax increase, and I, I think the citizens that are reasonable, that will listen to what's going on in the community would also say, this is not a tax increase, this is the county government trying to capture the same amount of funds. One of the other issues that I think that is tied to this is some negativity regarding purchases of the golf course and Nash Farms and the airport and those things. And looking at the budget, the percent of what you spend on that is extremely small. I mean, I compare it to, if I earned $50,000 a year and had a mortgage payment of about 150 or less, that's not being irresponsible. So did we probably pay too much for the golf course, probably? Did we get a great deal on the airport? Absolutely. In the long run, are both those good things for the community? In the long run, yes, but in the short run, you take the heat. So I don't think that you can compare that and say that y'all have been irresponsible in any kind of way, but you're gonna, from a political standpoint, see that. You have to make wise decisions, and as a leader and as a pastor, I've been in situations where it's either A or B, and someone's gonna be mad. So I would encourage you to, to make the millage adjustment for the community so that we can try to maintain basic services, and with the hope that everyone working together will be able to have more businesses come in the community, the economy will recover, and we'll be able to move forward and maybe give those police and firemen and other employees some cost of livings adjustments and other things in future budgets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Kennedy. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in regards to the proposed Good morning, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am, good morning, my name is Sandra Vincent, I live at 130 Bennington Court in McDonough, Georgia, and I just wanted to stand in support of what this body has done as it relates to stabilizing our budget. I know you're in a very difficult position right now, but it is critical, it is critical to Henry County that we do make a millage adjustment. I fully agree with what Tommy Kennedy has just said, to, to not do this would be irresponsible for the county, so I want to commend you on your decision, I want to encourage you to continue to move forward as it relates to those investments that we've made. It's very, very vital to the sustainability and the quality of life of our county, and I just think it would be remiss on my part to not say that I support what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in regards to the millage? If not, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting... If not, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting as it relates to the public hearing for the millage rate, and to remind the citizens that we do have two more meetings that will allow you an opportunity to come in and voice your thoughts on the millage rate. Those meetings will be 6:00 PM tonight and also 9:00 AM Wednesday, August the 1st. And so we encourage you to do that, and of course, you're always welcome, if you cannot attend a meeting, to submit your questions or comments via email, and you can find us on the county website and can email us very quickly from there, but we always welcome public comment when we have to make these important decisions. Moving on in the agenda, the next item that we are going to consider is a resolution requesting authorization to use funds from the federal and state narcotics forfeiture account for certification training. Our presenter is Major Jason Bolton, and that's handout number one. And before Major Bolton gets started, I do want to thank all the citizens that took time to be here today for this public hearing. We absolutely need your input, and thank you for taking time to be here. Good morning again.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Sometimes during the course of an investigation, it's necessary to retrieve information from the phone of a suspect or a victim. This information, whether it's pictures, video, text, or a call log, can be vital in either proving or disproving a case. The police department currently utilizes a piece of equipment from a company called Cellbright, known as a U-Fed, which is a universal forensic extraction device to retrieve this type of evidence from cell phones. The detective currently tasked with recovering this type of information is currently self-taught on the equipment, and while he has had success in his endeavors, there's a lot about the equipment that he doesn't know and he needs to learn. We have recently learned of an upcoming certification course in the Atlanta area, which would not only help the detective make better use of this equipment, but would also help tremendously when he is called to court to testify as to the retrieval of this evidence off of these cell phones. The cost of the training is listed as $2,295, but if we register by August 1st, there is a 20% discount, which puts the total at $1,836. We realize this seems a bit costly for a single class, but we do feel that the long-term benefits are worth it, and with your permission, we are requesting to use funds from the seized asset and forfeiture account to pay for this class.
Does, Mr. Bowman?
Are there any other detectives that are currently certified, Major Bolton?
There are not, no, sir. He is the only user of this equipment.
Okay, how long has Detective Yancy been with Henry County?
I would say at least...
You can take a wag.
I'm thinking 15 years at least.
Okay, good, good. I just want to be sure that we, you know, have somebody that had a lot of time for Henry County.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And in addition to this task that he has, he is kind of considered our electronic equipment guru. He's the one that basically creates all the bolos that you see from the police department that we put out. He is in charge of trying to enhance the videos surveillance tapes that we get from the robberies and the other crimes that we get. So he is kind of our technical expert, so this is just one of the other tasks that he has as well, is retrieving this information from phones.
I thought I recognized the name, because I've been through it before and looked at some of the IT equipment and some of the things, and I'm pretty sure that this was the gentleman that I met in there, so...
More than likely, yes, sir. He actually lives pretty much in that office where we have all of the equipment and monitors set up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
He is very valuable to the department. I know, and this was really almost comical, but the city of Atlanta brings their video, has brought videotapes to this individual to enhance them in order to help identify suspects and crimes, and so he is very, very skilled at what he does.
That is correct. I have seen detectives from APD multiple times down there asking for his assistance to enhance videos for them as well. So yes, ma'am.
Mr. Preston?
Jason, is there anything? I know in my industry, we also do a lot of certifications that are rather expensive, but they're definitely worthwhile. Do we put any type of amortization, like we make the employees sign a 24 to 36-month, that if they leave a term of service with us, that there's an amortization essentially of the period? That way, it protects the county as well? I know I do that with my office, and it's no problem, because this, you know, Officer Yancy sounds like he's very committed, but it's just a protection for the county.
There's been no discussion about doing that with this. We have done that in the past when we send somebody to perhaps Command College or some other expensive school, but usually that's, I guess, more of a money value there, but we have not discussed doing that in this particular case. But I'm certain he would have no problem with it if we needed to do that.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before your resolution authorizing the use of seized, the seized asset forfeiture account for this specialized training, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is Michael Harris, who is our division director, and he's going to come forward with a discussion on creating a day porter janitorial position to clean the admin building, which is actually going to result in significant cost savings on the cleaning of our facility. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, board members. As stated, what we're looking to do is look for the ways to continue to cut our costs and cut our expenses here within the county. And one of the options that we've discussed in conversations with the county manager has been adjusting and amending our current contract as it relates to the administration building. Right now, we have a contract that will be expiring soon, and our purchasing department is currently in the process of sending on RFP, has an RFP out already to replace that cleaning contract. But in looking at the function of services as it relates to this building, the thought was that we could bring on a day porter, create a day porter position to handle all the cleaning duties throughout the course of the day. Obviously, this is being the most prominent county facility that we have that receives the majority of our public citizens. Want to make sure we continue to maintain the cleaning services here within this building. But we could do that and cover the cost for the day porter position as well as the required supplies for less than what we're currently spending on the contract to clean this building. We're currently spending in excess of about $40,000 to clean this building, and, you know, we anticipate personnel costs of somewhere between $22,000 and $27,000, and supply costs between $5,000 to $8,000. So, you know, we're looking at a, you know, being able to reduce the cost for maintaining this particular building by a few thousand dollars. And again, we're just trying to, anywhere, any way possible, to look for, continue to look for cost savings throughout. And right now, we're requesting from the board authorization to create this new position. Upon authorization from the board, we'd come back, get the details and the exact job description, and bring that back for the board for authorization.
And this position would be part-time, there'd be no benefits and no retirement?
That's what I'm proposing right now, yes, ma'am.
Could you question? Because if our benefits package runs at 14,000, and then, you know, the supply's at 5, we'd have to, so it has to kind of stay part-time for it to cash flow, like with the savings?
And that's the way it's being structured right now.
All right, this is for discussion purposes only, it's not an action item unless the board, if the board chooses to move forward, they, Michael will bring a resolution back this evening for approval. Is there any further comments or questions? Mr. Stamey?
Michael, right now, we have a day maid in and evening cleaners, too. So are we getting away from the night cleaning, or just doing it all day?
We are. It's principally going to be utilizing a day porter. What we'll be doing is likely asking some of the departments to help pick up some of the slack, in all honesty. There's some things that we currently do ourselves now. Some of the vacuuming, certainly, departments can handle on our own. We've done that some other departments as well. And looking at utilizing our community service personnel as well to kind of help offset and supplement some of the work that's being done by the day porter, that's being done from the night. Likely, maybe have them stay, the day porter stay, maybe a little bit of time afterwards, work a little bit after 5:00, to be able to handle some of the trash pickup and things like that before, at the end of the day.
Might be to be some utility savings there, too, because sometimes in the evenings, you have all the lights on in the building when they're cleaning, too, so there might be some additional savings there, too.
That's correct.
Mr. Bowman?
I'd just like for Commissioner Preston, I'm sorry I didn't hear, would your comment about, was it part-time, or would you repeat that for me?
Yeah, I was, you know, getting back to what Madam Chair was talking about, if this goes to a full-time position and we do benefits, if they get their retirement as well as, you know, healthcare, then I don't know if we have a savings. So for this to actually generate a savings for the county, it would have to remain part-time work.
Okay, I understand. I'm sorry I didn't, I didn't catch all of it, and I just want to be sure I understood what you were saying.
And I just kind of, this sounds fine with me, Michael, I'm just, the only concern I have is that, I mean, I know cleaning is not everybody's favorite thing, and I just, I hope that it stays the same level as what everybody's expected. I want it to be a true cost savings.
Correct.
Well, we can always go back if it, if the service does not meet the expectation, and we start having issues, we always have the option of going back and bidding the service out at a later date. But I think the person that's being considered for this position is someone who has been in this building for a number of years, and Ms. Essie, and she's done a fabulous job, and I'm sure she would continue to do so.
Yes, ma'am.
Is she full-time or part-time?
I believe, because she's not with us, she's actually contracted through the current cleaning companies, I'm not sure how her pay is...
Is she here part-time or is she here full-time? Because I see her all the time.
Yeah, I believe it is. I believe she's 8 to 4, and I don't think she's paid through her lunch, I think is how it's structured.
I actually believe her salary would be a little bit better with us than it was with the cleaning company. But she did such a great job. This is the second cleaning company we've had since I've been on board, and the first company, once they lost the bid on the contract, the current company actually hired Ms. Essie to work for them because she did such a great job.
That's correct. Yeah, she's never worked for the county, she's always been associated with the cleaning company.
Always on a subcontract.
Does she fit with that company?
I don't believe so, not to my knowledge.
All right, so if this meets the board's approval, Michael can come back with a resolution this evening for an official action by the board, unless someone has some concerns.
Numbers and also hours, so that there's no misunderstanding about part-time, full-time, and give us some numbers, and I think we move forward.
And she sees benefits as well.
All right. If there's no further business to come before the board at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0, we stand adjourned.